Everyone, like to call to order the City of Arvada, City of Arvada, Arvadi, City of Arvada Housing Authority. Ms. Rush, could you do the roll call, please? Sorry, I caught you right as you sat down.
Chairman Williams, Vice Chair Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Pfeiffer.
Sorry, I'm not used to the buttons here.
Commissioner Pfeiffer.
Attendance.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to.
I'm like, wait, what, am I missing something?
Commissioner Paray.
Here.
Commissioner Mormon.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Marriott.
Here.
It looks like that was not correct.
I would entertain a motion to excuse Commissioner Williams. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I move, is it Commissioner or Chair Williams, but Commissioner.
Yeah, Chair.
Chair Williams from tonight's housing.
Motion to excuse Chairman Williams from tonight's. Let me start the voting, sorry. We're getting, that passes, that passes six to zero with Commissioner Williams being absent. So that was, that was a perfect start to the Housing Authority meeting. Appreciate everybody's involvement in that. It's going to get even better from here, which is for sure. So we have the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of May 1st, 2023. Any corrections or amendments to that? Seeing none, those will stand as submitted and are approved. Is there anyone here for public comment for the Housing Committee? Or I'm sorry, the Housing Authority meeting? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of our meeting and move to new business. And it appears as though we've got two items, a Housing Authority Annual Report and the Annual Plan.
Thank you, and good evening. It's hard to believe it's been one year since our last annual report, but here we are. So the purpose of the annual report, it highlights the accomplishments of the Arvada Housing Authority for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th of 2023. And before I jump in, I want to first acknowledge the work of Deana Cody, our Housing Choice Voucher Program Supervisor. She compiled all the data that you will see tonight in tonight's report, as well as a big thank you to Liz Johnson, who is our Communications Manager, and Steve Milkie for creating the report that you'll see before you this evening. I'm proud to say that the Housing Authority had yet another successful year. And in this report, we're highlighting a few of the Housing Authority's accomplishments. The Housing Authority provided rental assistance to 453 households in 2022 and into 2023, and that's out of a total of 513 regular housing vouchers. We anticipate by the end of 2023 that that number will be up to 485 approximately. So we're getting closer to using our, most of our vouchers. As always, we don't quite get enough of what we need in terms of our budget from HUD, but we're getting closer. This is the highest our leasing has been in quite some time. The total rental assistance paid to landlords during that period was just over 6.6 million, which is an increase from 5.7 million from the previous year. Thirty-nine percent of the households that we serve are elderly, and 53% are persons with disabilities. So we are touching the people who are on very limited incomes, so we're very proud of that. We do try to prioritize our vouchers to those who are on very limited income, so we're proud of, of, of that. The last time that the Housing Authority opened its waiting list was in October of 2021. And we received a total of 963 applications during that two-day period that we were accepting applications. Right now, we're down to 198 people left on that waitlist. So we're anticipating that we'll accept applications again in early, oh, I'm sorry, late 2023 and early 2024, somewhere in that period. We continue to look at ways to improve our services. We are making housing assistance payments electronically to those landlords who wish to participate in that program. And we continue to work to introduce an online resident certification portal. So trying to make efficiencies for people who want to do their paperwork electronically, but we will always offer the opportunity for those who don't want to participate in that manner to do their paperwork manually. As far as addressing homelessness, we are pleased to report that out of the 49 mainstream vouchers that we have, we are currently using 48 of those vouchers. And those vouchers are targeted to people who are persons with disabilities and who are experiencing homelessness. So we are almost at full utilization of those vouchers. Twenty-five of those, of those, to date, there are 25 formerly homeless individuals who are using those vouchers, and they were referred by the Arvada Homeless and Housing Navigators. Out of the total voucher allocation that we have, those 453, 87 of those applicants were formerly homeless. I'm sorry, 47% were new admissions, were people who were experiencing homelessness. And seven of those were referrals from the city's One Small Step program. So we're continuing to partner with the other city departments to see what we can do to address homelessness. In regards to affordable housing development and production, we do continue our efforts to partner with affordable housing developers. And the report contains a list of the projects that we are currently in partnership with. You can see that the Cornerstone Legacy Project, which will provide 72 units of affordable senior housing in Arvada. We are still in partnership or communication with that developer. The Vance Street Flats Project, which is currently under construction and will open in the next few months, that will provide 50 units of affordable housing in Arvada. The Ralston Gardens Project, which recently had its groundbreaking, that will provide 102 units of affordable housing. The Marshall Homes Project at 5549 Marshall Street, that will provide 85 units of permanent supportive housing. We are currently still in conversation with Habitat for Humanity for that 1.2-acre parcel that was donated to them, and that will provide 20 units of, yeah, 20 townhomes for people who meet the eligibility guidelines for that project. Arvada House, we currently participated with them to renovate 88 units of existing senior housing. And then we are also talking with the developer of Marshall Point Apartments at 52nd Avenue and Marshall Street to develop 260 units of affordable housing in that area.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. I just have a quick question while you're on this part of it. I know you can finish your report up, but I didn't want to lose it while we were here. So you have these lists of projects that the Arvada Housing Authority partners with. Other than getting them property tax exempt status, do we do anything else besides that? And can you tell us what that might be?
Sure. So it's also, it's the special limited partnership that you just mentioned for the property tax and sales tax exemption. And some of these developments, we are offering loans or grants to help with some of the gap financing, as well as housing vouchers that will be project-based at these sites.
Okay, and so the Housing Authority is, is offering grants to these, or are you talking about the city in general?
It's the Housing Authority in most cases, yes.
And what's the source of the money for those grants that we would give to an affordable housing developer?
In most cases, it's the revenue that we receive out of those special limited partnerships. We'll receive a waterfall payment out of that ownership if the property is doing well. And in most cases, that's the Castle Gate Apartments development. We've been a partner in that project for a number of years. It's doing very well at this point. So we receive approximately 180,000, that was our most recent payment from them annually from Castle Gate that we use to then support these other projects.
Okay, thank you.
And then, as far as recommended activities for 2023 and 2024, our goals are to continue our efficient operation of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. We are doing a considerable amount of work regarding project-based vouchers, so we are taking a closer look at that. And as Vance Street Flats opens, which is our first project that we will be project-basing our vouchers at, that we're gearing up to make sure that we are in good shape for when that happens. We will continue our work with private developers and nonprofit organizations to encourage and support construction and rehab of affordable housing development. We will explore new opportunities for funding and partnerships. We want to develop more landlord recruitment strategies, because we will not be successful in our efforts without landlord participation. And we will continue to make advancements towards addressing homelessness and using our vouchers to help some of the most vulnerable in the community. That brings us to the end of the annual report. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have. And if there are no questions, staff recommends a motion to approve the annual report.
I don't see any questions, or Ms. Ferret, Ferret?
You got it. Close enough. Just wondering, are we doing anything to focus on keeping people in the home? You know, I know there's a lot of aging people in the community, so I didn't see that in the strategies. I saw rehab, but I didn't see that.
The Housing Authority itself hasn't focused so much on that. For our voucher holders who are, who are, who currently have a voucher and need those assistance, we will obviously get involved as those cases are identified and get them connected with local resources. In terms of the Housing Division itself and, and what we're doing, the rehab program is our biggest effort to keep people in their homes. Our partnerships with Brothers redevelopment through the Help for Homes program, the Safe and Accessible program to do more of those modifications for accessibility in their homes. We do offer, we use our CDBG funding to support those programs.
Thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
If there's any questions, I'll.
I don't see any other. Go ahead and proceed with the motion.
Before I make the motion, I'll make it afterwards as a comment. I move that the Arvada Housing Authority Annual Report be approved. And I just want to say thank you very much, great report. It's nice to see good successes, and as we adapt with our environment and our communities' needs, it clearly shows that the Arvada Housing Authority is doing the same to, to meet those needs and demands. And obviously, we don't always have enough resources to do everything we want to do, but I feel we have slightly moved the needle in the right directions, and our trajectory is at least on the right course. So I appreciate all your effort and your team's efforts around this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, I wanted to make a comment as well. I think, you know, I, I thank you for this annual report. It's good to touch base with it and see this every year. I think you guys deserve lots of compliments on the way you run the voucher program. I believe we probably run our voucher program much more efficiently than any other organization around, which is a really good thing, because it means more of that money set aside for that goes to actually paying people's rent, and less of it goes to overhead and other things. So I just want to give you a compliment on that. Good job, that's the core of this program, that's virtually the whole program, but it's certainly the core of it. And doing that in an efficient manner now and into the future is really important, so good job on that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, and just again, I appreciate, great, great report, great to see the impact on, on people's lives of the work that you're doing. So with that, that passes six to zero with Chairman Williams being absent.
Thank you. Ready for the next item?
Please.
Okay. So the next item on the report is the Arvada Housing Authority Annual Plan. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, requires housing authorities with 550 vouchers or more to complete an annual plan. And this plan outlines our one-year goals for the Housing Authority. The plan informs HUD residents and the public of strategies that address the needs of people served through the programs. In 2021, the Housing Authority received an additional 15 vouchers, which increased our voucher total to 562 and triggering the need for us to complete our first annual plan. The Housing Authority did appoint a resident advisory board, which consists of current Housing Choice Voucher Program participants to receive their feedback on drafting the annual, annual plan in order to make sure that we were seeking participant feedback in those goals. The goals outlined in the annual plan support the Housing Authority's five-year plan that was completed in 2020. And those four goals are, one, to plan for a range of neighborhoods and housing types to accommodate the diverse housing needs of all residents. So in, in order to meet that goal, that annual plan mentions the work the city's doing with Root Policy Research to complete the City of Arvada Housing Strategic Plan. The plan will address the needs, strategies, and goals for all housing types in Arvada. The newly-created Arvada Housing Advisory Committee will partner with Root Policy Research in the creation of the Housing Strategic Plan and offer recommendations to the Arvada City Council. And once that's completed and approved, this document will provide a vision for the range of neighborhoods and housing types to address the needs of all residents. The second goal identified in the annual plan is to encourage development of affordable housing throughout Arvada. And you saw that in the annual report that I just provided, our partnerships, how we're using our resources to support the development work in the community. So that is identified as goal number two in the annual plan. Goal three is to maintain and improve the quality, improve the quality of the existing housing stock in Arvada and revitalize neighborhoods that are in decline. The Arvada House project, the renovation project of the 88 existing units of senior housing in Arvada is a great example of the Housing Authority using its resources to support that project. We are, we did become a special limited partner in that project to offer the property and sales tax exemption. So we are proud of that work, and that is part of goal number three. And then the fourth and final goal in the annual plan is to provide opportunities for special needs and senior housing in Arvada. The work that the Housing Authority has done recently related to project-based vouchers, I think is a great example of meeting this goal. All those projects, with the exception of Arvada House that you saw in the annual report, we will dedicate vouchers to those projects in order to help them meet their goal for their property. The Housing Authority's deadline to submit our annual plan is October of 2023, and the housing team is requesting approval of the Arvada Housing Authority 2024 Annual Plan.
Mr. Mormon.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie, for the report and for this plan. My question is about the plan in regards to our new appointed housing advisory committee. So have they had a chance to see this plan and, and provide input to it?
They did not see this plan. This plan was drafted before the first meeting of the Housing Advisory Committee, but we did seek involvement from the resident advisory board that was created that consists of Housing Choice Voucher Program participants.
So given the timing, then, are you going to be able to go and, and present this to the advisory committee soon, then?
Yes, we can do that. And when we, now that we are in, on this annual cycle of these plans, we can then take next year's draft plan to a future meeting of the Housing Advisory Committee as well.
I think that'd be great, because I mean, that's, we appointed them to provide advice to us on these matters. So I think it'd be really important to get their input on it.
Right, absolutely. It's just a timing issue, this go-around.
Yeah, I understand, thank you.
Any other questions or action? Ms. Ferret, and Mr. Mormon.
Did I beat you to it?
You did.
All right. I'd like to make the motion.
Go ahead and make the motion.
I move that the Arvada Housing Authority Annual Plan be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. And that passes six to zero with Chairman Williams being absent. Thank you very much. Great, great report, we appreciate the work that, that you're doing with the authority, and we look forward to our, to our next update.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, we will now adjourn our housing, Arvada Housing meeting, and roll right into our Arvada City Council meeting. So I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for July 10th, 2023, and call on Councilmember Simpson.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence. And now join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rush, the will, or the roll call, please.
Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Paray.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Williams from tonight's business meeting.
Motion's to excuse Mayor Williams from tonight's meeting, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being excused. Great, we'll move on. Presented are the minutes for the City Council Business Meetings, dated June 5th, 2023, and June 20th, 2023. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, the meetings will, the meeting minutes will stand as presented. We don't have any recognitions or presentations tonight, so we'll move on to public comment. Next on the agenda is public comment for items not scheduled on the agenda for a public hearing, which is limited to three minutes per person. Public comment is your opportunity to address your city council. We always listen carefully to what you have to say, but we do not respond to comments during the meeting. We'll refer any issues raised during public comment to the city team for further research and resolution if appropriate. I have one signed up right now, Alma Corillo.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Alma Corillo, I'm from Representative Brittany Patterson's office. I'm here just to remind everybody, if you have any issues with the federal agency or anything you would like our office to know, just give us a call. It's 303-274-7944. But I also wanted to highlight a couple of things that we're doing. Our applications for the Service Academy nominations are open for graduating seniors who would like to apply for military academies. So anyone who is interested, please reach out to our office. And also for any veterans who served during the Vietnam War and would like to be recognized for their service, also please reach out to our office. We're planning a couple of things to recognize people who served during that time. And if you have any questions, also reach out. So thank you for your time and for having me.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anyone else in council chambers that wanted to speak during public comment? Go ahead, come on down. If you just state your name and address.
My name is Nancy Tardy, and I was. I don't know where this list should have gone, but I didn't see who I should have given it to.
To the city clerk right here, sorry.
Okay. So my address is 7434 Queen Circle, where I've lived for 37 years. And I really want to know what's happening with my recycling. I signed up for the city's program, and I want to go and visit the recycling facility, but when I called Republic, they said, no, we don't give any tours. I think that's crazy, because I need to know how effective the program is with my own materials. And we worked in that industry, and so I really want to get permission from you guys, you ought to be able to twist their arms, and to be able to go. And also, I want the city to develop a site where we can drop off yard waste. It's crazy that we don't have that. I was looking today to see, well, what does Lakewood do? What does Westminster do? And I did see Jefferson County drop-off dated 2019. So clearly, something needs to be done about that. And I don't like to throw any organic waste into the, into the landfill. So please, do your part.
Thank you. I'm sure someone from the city team will get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers? Kristen, do we have anybody? Okay, great, we'll close the public comment portion of our meeting and move on to our consent agenda. First item on the consent agenda is R23-055, a resolution authorizing a canal crossing agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Farmers Highline Canal and Reservoir Company at 72nd Avenue approximately 200 feet east of Kendrick Street. 2021 Water Main Project Improvement. Next, R23-056, a resolution authorizing a crossing agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Highline, and the Farmers Highline Canal and Reservoir Company for a water crossing at the intersection of Jellison Street and 73rd Avenue for slip lining. Next, R23-057, a resolution authorizing a crossing agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Farmers Highline Canal and Reservoir Company for a bridge railing replacement along Alchire Street at West 80th Avenue. Next, R23-058, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Old Castle SW Group, Inc., DBA APC Construction Company for project number 23-ST-01E, Kipling Parkway Pavement Resurfacing in the amount not to exceed $652,727. And the final consent item is R23-059, a resolution declaring that, declaring the intent of the City of Arvada to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds, PABs, to Marshall Point Apartments for the benefit of low and middle-income families or persons, or persons, and authorizing carry-forward allocations. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda items, R23-055 through R23-059, all be approved.
Motion's for approval. All motions are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Move, next to our resolutions, first we'll consider R23-060, a resolution granting the general contractor agreement for Phase II construction services for the Myers Pool Replacement Project to Saunders Construction LLC based on the initial guaranteed minimum price of $38,240, $240,000 in seven, let me just round this to, not to exceed $39 million. Mr. Archer, sorry. Can, can I make correction of that opening? He said minimum. You mean maximum. Maximum, yes, maximum, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. We're here tonight to request approval of the general contractor agreement for Myers Pool Phase II to Saunders Construction, approximately $38.2 million. As many of you know, the groundbreaking was held on June 20th, and this project demonstrates a tremendous partnership between the City of Arvada, Apex, and the School District. Unfortunately, costs have increased significantly since the start of this project back in January of 2021. We're currently about $10.5 million over the original plan. Inflationary increase in 2021 was 19%, and 2022 was 5%, and so far this year, 2%. We're hoping with the approval of this GMP that we can move forward on the contract and not see significant increases from this point forward. And again, the city, Apex, and School District are committed to completing this project on time with an opening scheduled for the end of 2024. And so we're here tonight again asking for approval.
Thank you. Any members of the public wish to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, any questions or discussion from council? I don't know if I missed this, but Mr. Mormon, I have your light and Mr. Marriott's light lit.
I would like to reserve the motion, if I may.
Okay. Mr. Marriott, did you have a comment?
No, I think my light was.
From before.
From before, yeah.
I don't see any other comments or questions, so, Mr. Mormon, you can proceed with the motion.
I move that R21-060, a resolution granting the general contractor agreement for Phase II construction services for the Myers Pool Replacement Project to Sanders Construction LLC based on the initial guaranteed maximum price of $38,240,799 be approved.
Thank you. If you'll cast your vote, all votes are cast, and that passes seven to zero, I'm sorry, six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Next, we'll consider R23-061, a resolution authorizing the City of Arvada to opt in to Proposition 123. Ms. Espinoza.
Hi, I would like to turn it over to Sam Bradley, our housing, affordable housing special, development specialist for this presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. The team at the city is recommending council approve the resolution to opt in to Proposition 123. This will give projects and services located within Arvada the ability to apply to the state Affordable Housing Fund for various types of financing and grants with financially advantageous terms. By opting in, the city would commit to increasing affordable housing in Arvada by 9% over a three-year period and to begin the development of a 90-day fast-track approval process, but would not have to finalize and implement this process until the end of 2026. After further examination of the legislation and the time to speak with DOLA and our counterparts in other municipalities, we feel the city is likely to be able to meet these obligations. There are currently 437 affordable units within four developments in the city's pre-development pipeline, and some or all of which may be counted towards this 9% increase. Each of these projects could greatly benefit from Prop 123 funding. We also feel that three years is an adequate amount of time to design a fast-track approval process that will ensure that control of development remains with council. For both these obligations, the legislation provides significant flexibility to ensure municipalities can undertake them in good faith and that the benchmarks set forth will be met. In the long term, we feel that the funding generated by Prop 123 is likely to become instrumental to the creation of affordable housing and supportive services in the whole state of Colorado, and that municipalities who choose not to opt in may have difficulties funding their projects and initiatives in the coming years. As Arvada's residents contribute to this fund through their tax dollars, regardless of whether or not the city opts in, we hope to be able to take advantage of the opportunity created by this funding source for the betterment of the city. So for all of these reasons, we ask that council pass the resolution to opt in to Proposition 123 at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Any public comment on that resolution? Seeing none, I'll open it up for council member comments or action. Ms., I was going to call you Smith, Ferret. I was going to call you Ms. Smith.
I just reserve the motion.
Okay, great. Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question. Since the last time we had a workshop, workshop on this subject, one of the issues in question is we're committing to a 9% increase in our subsidized housing over a three-year time period. Have we yet sussed out 9% of what number?
So we think that it is going to be, we think we're going to have to use the Jefferson County income standard. So that is going to mean a total of about 600-plus new units for the city. But as I mentioned, we currently have 437 in the pipeline.
Right.
And just kind of depending on when they're permitted, that we may be able to count them.
Right.
So I think we're, we're really, like, well on track to meet that.
So we're, we're counting somewhere near 7,000 then subsidized units in Arvada already.
Yes, so.
And that we're committing to increase that number by 3% a year for three years.
Yes.
Or add 600 and something.
Yeah, and the way the legislation is written, it doesn't have to be 3% every single year. It can just, it just needs to equal 9% over the three-year, by the end of the three-year.
No, I just wanted to make sure people understand the, the scope of what we're talking about here when we're committing to something, what we're committing to and how, where that number came from. And this is the first time we've had more definitive numbers on, you know, that there currently are 7,000-ish, you know, subsidized units that, that are here and, and what we're going to be committing to add to it. So thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other comments, you can make the motion.
Awesome. I move that R23-061, a resolution authorizing the City of Arvada to opt in to Proposition 123 be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. All right, first reasons, first readings. Normally, I do the first readings, and I forgot to ask somebody if they would like to do that tonight. Mr. Pfeiffer, you got that?
Yeah, I move that Council Bill 23019 in ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement buy-in among Apex Parks and Recreation District, Jefferson County School District R1, and the City of Arvada for JCSD prior to use of the George J. Myers Swimming Center Replacement Facility be approved on first reading. Order published in full on public hearing to be set for August 7, 2023 at 6:15 p.m.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you for covering for me on that, Mr. Pfeiffer. So before we begin our public hearings, I know that we have people waiting for one of our public hearings specifically, where the applicant may be requesting a continuance of that hearing. So council, with, are there any objections to calling the TriPoint Development application items 10H, 10.H and 10.I first so that we can have that conversation? Is everybody okay with that? Okay, great. So seeing no objection, I will now open the public hearing for those two items. Candela's filing number one, Amendment Number Four, Planned Unit Development, PUD, from Land Development Code generally located north of Candela's Parkway and McIntyre Street, bounded by West 93rd Place and Kilmer Way in the City of Arvada, Colorado, and Candela's filing number one, Amendment Number Four, Major Subdivision Preliminary Platte from the Land Development, from the Land Development Code generally located north of Candela's Parkway and McIntyre Street, boundaries, bounded by West 93rd Place and Kilmer Way in the City of Arvada, Colorado. And as I mentioned, it's our understanding that the applicant would like to request a continuance of the public hearing scheduled for tonight. It is council's discretion, under the council rules of procedure and Land Development Code, to either approve or deny a request for continuance. So if we could hear from the applicant first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Marcus Pacner, P-A-C-H-N-E-R. I represent the applicant, which is TriPoint Homes. Thank you for introducing these two manners, two matters, excuse me. I am here tonight to respectfully request the continuance on the public hearing of both of these items. There are two specific reasons we are asking for that continuance. The first is a key team member of ours has been called or was called as an expert witness today and had to testify in a matter. So that was after we had provided notice. So our senior planner, who had been involved in this project for the last two and a half years, could not be here this evening. We think it is imperative that we're able to go through this project. As all of you know, there's a lot of psych planning details that needed to be, go through and understand really the details. So we thought we owed that to the community to have her here. Secondly, in the last couple of weeks, we've also had additional contact with some neighbors who asked for an additional community discussion. So we wanted to have that community discussion in fairness, just to kind of lay out the overall timeline. We last had our required community meeting on December 9th, and then we went through the formal Arvada process. So that means we were at Planning Commission on March 21st, and then obviously here tonight on July 10th. That is still a substantial amount of time. We have continued that neighborhood outreach, but it hasn't been in the formal process for the neighborhood meeting. So we agreed, we communicated back with the neighbors that we had liked to have that additional discussion with them, and actually went so far to make direct communication to them on Thursday, or excuse me, Friday, every neighbor that had been involved in the process. And we actually called every member that we could locate that has testified on this matter in the last couple of years directly over the weekend and today. So we tried to make direct communication that we were asking for this continuance so that we didn't have people here waiting to go through that process. So I'm happy to provide additional background information. We believe that we have made substantial changes and really want to reflect that, but we want to be able to show that to all of you. So we were respectfully requesting a continuance to a date certain. I believe that date is August 14th, but we'll be respectful of that process. But we would like to continue the public hearings.
Thank you. Any council members have questions or comments before we make a motion? Mr. Pfeiffer.
Clarification of your community, uh, community engagement. So last time we had a community meeting was in December?
The last formal community meeting, yes, sir.
So is there going to be another formal one between now and then as well?
Yes.
Or could there be a couple of them?
Yeah, thank you for asking. So when I made that communication, we said that on August 1st at 6:00 p.m. we would have another community meeting. We also said, councilman, that we would send a direct invitation to people. So we'll have that one at least. We hadn't scheduled another one. We scheduled that just so everybody knew it was a virtual meeting, but we certainly could take that under advisement. If that's not a great date, we'll certainly have another one. But that was our process, is we wanted to be sure and provide a date.
Will that be in-person and virtual, or just virtual?
I think that's where you're headed now, or that's where most cities are. So we just wanted to say for sure it was August 1st, so we will do it in-person and virtual.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions. As long as there's some community engagement, I will, can I make comments or should I wait?
Well, why don't we make a motion, and then you could make comments? So if there's someone willing to make the motion for continuance.
I, I can make the motion.
Okay.
I, uh, let me go back to, let me make sure I get it right. Uh, I think I lost it. Never mind, I can't do it. I lost it.
Mr. Marriott.
Got it.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move that we continue the public hearing on Candela's filing number one, Amendment Number Four, Planned Unit Development, to August 17th? Am I saying that right?
Uh, 14.
14, I'm sorry. Uh, August 14th. And I think we want to do two of them correct.
Do two, yeah, two separate, yeah. Sorry, let me clear that. Motion for continuance for Candela's filing number one, Amendment Number Four. And Mr. Pfeiffer, if you could, oh, I'm sorry, you'd like to speak.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because, I mean, obviously, in perception, I'm just looking towards the applicant that this looks, you know, I understand your circumstances, but, you know, you had a lot of time to communicate, a lot of time this date was set. I get that your, your technical support person is not able to be here, but you've got to make all effort to reach out to the community. As you know, this is not the first time you've been in front of us on this development. So I, I encourage you to do everything possible to engage that community prior to this hearing. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. I'll also move that, that the public hearing on Candela's filing number one, Amendment Number Four, Major Subdivision Preliminary Platte, be continued to August 14th as well.
Motion for continuance for Candela's filing number one, Amendment Number Four, Major Subdivision Preliminary Platte. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Appreciate the fact that you have done some reach out to the community prior to the council chambers being full. My sense is that on August 14th, we'll have more people here ready to, to give some feedback on that particular, on those particular filings. So appreciate you coming tonight.
One quick comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, when will this be updated on the website? Since there is a sign out front now saying the hearing's tonight, I'm assuming that would be one of the first things in the morning to be done right away? Since it's advertised in front of the property right now?
Yes, we'll make sure that's done first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, all up on the public hearing for Council Bill 23-014, in ordinance repealing and reacting Section 62-39, Criminal Mischief, and adding Sections 62-79, Criminal Tampering Service, 62-80, Criminal Tampering Property, 62-81, Criminal Liability of Business Entities, and 62-82, Criminal Liability of an Individual for Corporate Conduct, and Article Two, Miscellaneous Offenses of Chapter 62, offenses to the Arvada City Code, Ordinance Number 4847. Ms. Grog.
Good evening, council. As you can see from the agenda, the city attorney's office has been hard at work trying to get through a backlog of amendments and revisions and updates to our code. And this is just kind of a small start. So I'm going to start with this one. I know you don't usually see me talking about criminal ordinances lately. It's been a while since I was in the courtroom. But this is some improvements that were needed that even as long ago as when I was prosecuting. So we put in a few different updates. The criminal mischief part, that was just updating it to match the Colorado Revised Statute, which, as you all know, is one of our goals, is to have our criminal ordinances really kind of match what our police officers see at the state level and what they would write out to Jefferson County. So this is updating, there had been an increase in the amount of the damage that can be caused. So we wanted to update our ordinance to match that. We did add our own little twist to this one. Years ago, when we had looked at any kind of damage done to park property, we wanted to make sure that was specifically outlined in our code. We did go through quite a period where we were having a lot of issues with our improved flower beds and areas of parks that were getting damaged. And this makes it very clear that that is criminal mischief under our code. The addition of criminal tampering was something that I really wanted when I was prosecuting. This is two kind of options. There, again, match the state code exactly. We're pretty much just taking that language and putting it into our own code. It can be used for a variety of reasons. A recent example that our criminal team was kind of informing me about was the kind of taking of, of electric from our transit hub and doing things to try to get into and plug in generators. This gives our police officers another enforcement tool and a way to address some of these concerns. This is also a really common one when we can't prove that there was actual financial damage, but property was tampered in a way to cause harassment to another person. So it's a pretty common criminal violation we just haven't had on our books. And the last two have to do with being able to cite a corporation or business for activities for their employees. My personal example that I've dealt with is when we have a contractor and one of the line guys is dumping slurry into a ravine. In the past, we would have had to write that person and not the company. This gives us some more flexibility on who we can write and who can be held criminally liable for those. So this is just kind of putting them all together because they all go into Chapter 62.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this public hearing? Seeing none, do we have any on, okay. We'll close the public comment portion of this and open it up for comment, council comment or action. Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, Ms. Simpson.
It's Simpson.
Simpson. Thank you.
I'll make the motion if there are no questions.
One second. Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I have a question for our, our team. The question I have is these two criminal offenses, the criminal liability for an individual for corporate conduct and the criminal liability of business entities. How common are these offenses throughout both state code and, and other municipalities?
So it is, those are taken again directly from the Colorado Revised Statutes. We honestly see it more with our code enforcement. And this, in the practical sense, we usually have always been able to address it. Most businesses, the manager or the owner is willing to take the ticket for one of their employees. It just takes a lot of extra legwork for our enforcement officers to find that right person. This really kind of cuts down that legwork and just says, we can send this to the registered agent for that company, and they got to figure it out and show up in court. So where we really, in the past, have struggled with serving either an employee, a line employee, like, where we don't, we know that that's not their action. They're kind of doing it on behalf of their company. So it's something that we've been able to work out in the past, but since we're looking at updating and matching our criminal code to the Colorado Revised Statute anyways, we thought it would be a good time to put it in.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I see, I see the flip side of that about, you know, the assumption is that if an employee in, in their job did something that the corporation asked them to do it, and so the corporation ought to be responsible. But as a owner of a corporation, if somebody does something that you told them not to do, but they do it anyway, being held criminally responsible for something that you, not only didn't you do, but you tried to not have happen, doesn't seem right. And I would assume that that's left then completely up to, whether it's code enforcement about charging authority or the, the city attorney's office and prosecutorial discretion. Am I reading that right?
Absolutely. We would absolutely have that conversation on whether or not this is a rogue employee, and that's the person that needs to be charged. Or, and what's interesting is the two sections kind of let us do either. So we can actually charge an employee for the corporate conduct. So it really just gives us so much more options. So we're not, by adopting this, saying that we will always charge the business. It's just in the just in those circumstances when we know that the business is really the one that is causing the issue.
Gives you another option, yeah. How frequently is this something that you face?
You know, I would say it comes up a couple of times a year, maybe a little bit more. This is something with like the cross connections ordinance as well. So, we're seeing it more with utilities, too. So, this gives another enforcement tool where in the past, we kind of had to rely on trying to take away contractor licenses. So, this is just kind of building that, but absolutely, we still have to prove it in court as well. So, there's... Just because we can charge it doesn't always mean we can prove it. So, you'll have not only that enforcement arm looking at it, but then you'll also have our office and our prosecutors looking at the case as well and what's appropriate to be charged and what can they actually prove in court.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, and even on the flip side, I appreciate the flexibility in that because on the flip side, it protects the employee who might be told to do that, and it's not fair for them to take criminal charges for what their company has told them. So, I think that flexibility, it's for you all to investigate and figure out what's best. So, I support what you've done. That's a great job.
Ms. Simpson?
All right. Thank you. I move that CB 23-014, an ordinance repealing and reenacting section 62-39, criminal mischief, and adding section 62-79, criminal tampering service, 62-80, criminal tampering property, 62-81, criminal liability of business entities, and 62-82, criminal liability of an individual for corporate conduct of Article II miscellaneous offenses of Chapter 62, offenses to the Arvada City Code be approved on final reading numbered 4847 and ordered published by Title Only. And my only comment is I know this is a lot of legwork to go back through all the old things, so thanks, team, for finding the capacity and time and doing such good work.
Thank you. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Now, I'll open public hearing 6223-015, an ordinance amending various sections of the Arvada City Code to reflect the change in name from North Jeffco Parks Park and Recreation to Apex Park and Recreation District, ordinance number 4848. Ms. Grogg?
This one will be a lot easier. This is just a correction, essentially not a typo because it was a change. It was correct at one time, but it's something that should have happened a long time ago. So, we picked out the three that were the easiest. You will see if you do, if you want to really dive in, there are two other places in the code where we still do have mention of North Jeffco. Both of those are full chapter rewrites that you're going to be seeing very soon. One is in the parks, and one is in our animal chapter. So, I didn't include those tonight because those are getting full rewrites, but this is just correcting a name and trying to get caught up on all of our revisions.
Thank you. Any member of the public wish to speak to this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for council questions or action. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I'll go ahead and make a motion if there's not any questions.
I don't see any. Go ahead and make the motion.
I move that Council Bill 23-015, an ordinance amending various sections of the Arvada City Code to reflect the change in the name from North Jeffco Park and Recreation to Apex Park and Recreation District be approved on final reading number 4848 and ordered published by Title Only.
Motion for approval, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing for CB 23-016, an ordinance amending subsection I-17, sentencing authority, sentencing options of section 58-1, jurisdiction and powers of the municipal court of Article 1 dash in general of Chapter 58 Municipal Court of the Arvada City Code, ordinance number 4849. Ms. Justice?
Good evening, Council. Restitution is a court's order for a criminal defendant to pay the victim of the crime some sort of financial retribution based on the damages that they've suffered as a result of the defendant's conduct. The current city code does not have a provision that outlines the process for which our municipal court orders restitution. So, this amendment to the city code outlines the specific procedure by which the court will order restitution, and it's been approved by both the city's attorney's office as well as the municipal judge. So, unless there's any questions, we recommend approval of CB 21016.
Thank you. Open for public comment on this particular hearing. Anyone seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open it for council member questions or action. Ms. Ferret? Pray?
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead and make your motion.
I move that CB 21-016, an ordinance amending subsection I-1VII, sentencing authority, sentencing options of section 58-1, jurisdiction and powers of the municipal court of Article 1 in general of Chapter 58 Municipal Court of the Arvada City Code be approved on final reading numbered 4849 and ordered by published... An ordered published by Title Only.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Next, I'll open public hearing CB 23-017, an ordinance repealing and reenacting sections 2-211, leasing of city-owned property of Article 6, city property of Chapter 2, administration of the Arvada City Code, ordinance number 4850. Ms. Hemler?
Good evening, Council. I'm going to join Ms. Grogg and Ms. Justice in our ordinances that we are proposing to as part of our updating project, and section 2-211 is one of them. It's the city's ordinance pertaining to the leasing of city property. It was last updated in 1983, so this update is well needed. And what it does is it does away with the distinction between residential and grazing land. So, all city-owned property will be treated the same under this ordinance. It also does away with a form lease that we are no longer using. The city attorney's office is drafting individual leases for each property depending on the property's needs and the laws of what's going on with that. And then, this one also allows the city manager to approve leases to lessees that are staying the same. So, people who council has already approved the lease, we're just doing a renewal. Nothing's changing. Maybe some terms of the lease are changing based on the laws, but that's really it. So, it authorizes the city manager to do that. It also authorizes her to do amendments and then terminate leases if it's within the best interests of the city to do so. And then, the final thing it does is gives direction to city staff. Tells us how we can submit these leases for approval to you, and we can do that via rezo. The previous ordinance didn't make a distinction one way or the other. So, we are asking that you approve Council Bill 23. I think it's 017.
Thank you very much. I'll open it for public comment for this hearing. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and open it for council member... Council member action or questions or action? I didn't see whose light came on first, so Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion.
One second. Mr. Marriott?
I have a question, actually.
Okay. Mr. Marriott, ask your question first, and then you can make the motion.
Okay. So, it looks like one of these actions that we're correcting here is rather than having the mayor sign lease renewals only, we're allowing the city manager to do that? Is that... Am I correct in that?
That is correct. Only to the same lesssee. So, as long as the lesssee's not changing.
Okay. But if the terms of the lease were to change, does that require any kind of council action or signature by the mayor as opposed to just the city manager?
That would not. It would still remain the city manager.
The city manager. Okay. And this is not withstanding the city manager's authority because obviously we grant broad authority to the city manager. But do we have anything else in our procedure or in our code other than just the great judgment of our leadership team that would, in the case of a lease, having to the same entity but having new terms, that would require that either that come to city council or that the mayor sign it, kind of providing that, you know, that independent look at it? Do we have anything there, or is it just purely based on the good judgment of the city management?
There's nothing coming out of the ordinance. We do have a policy in place right now for our residential properties. Those are the ones that we see changed most frequently. I haven't seen any change in lessees or any major changes on the commercial side. Those are kind of few and far between. And then, the ordinance does require all the leases to go through the city attorney's office, so we are checking each lease there. So, we do have some of that oversight built in there, but there's nothing expressly going to city council or requiring the mayor's signature in that instance.
Okay. But yet, new leases still are going to require the signature of the mayor.
Correct. Yeah, all new leases will go to council for approval.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. I move that CB 23-017, an ordinance repealing and reenacting sections 2-211, leasing of city-owned property of Article 6, city property of Chapter 2, administration of the Arvada City Code be approved on final reading numbered 4850 and ordered published by Title Only.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you. Next, I'll open a public hearing for major modification from land development code to increase the maximum height allowed for a solid fence in the front setback to six feet within the LDC Division 4-7-2, restricts the height of solid fences in the front yard to three feet, generally located at 5618 West 64th Avenue, Arvada, Colorado. For this hearing, I'll need to swear in the applicant and any members of the public who wish to speak. So, would anyone who plans to speak on this matter, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you very much. Mr. Sm... I'm going to just call you Rob because I always say your name wrong. Smantana. I'll turn it over to you for part of the presentation.
Great. Thank you. As you mentioned, the applicant is requesting a major modification to allow for a six-foot fence within the front setback of the lot adjacent to 64th Avenue when the land development code restricts the height of a solid fence to three feet. The fence is proposed to run the entire length of the lot frontage. The planning commission did review this request at their June 20th meeting and did vote four to zero with three absent to recommend approval of the major modification. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance for questions and a presentation. We also have Planner Jeremiah Bebo here for any questions as well.
Thank you very much. So, now we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Council. I have a presentation or... Mahone. My name is Zach Mahone. I am the owner of 5618 West 64th Avenue. I'm here tonight to talk about this major modification. I believe I have a really unique situation which qualifies this. A little bit of background about the project. As in the description, I'm looking to increase the height of my fence up until six feet for a number of reasons, increase safety along the road, sound dampening, and to increase the curb appeal of the project. The reasons for this major modification is that the six feet extends... exceeds the 50% setback in 1979, which is the three feet, 50% transparency. My requested six-feet encroachment is setback 20 feet, which is really what all we're talking about is what's in front of the building. What is at the side of the building has already been approved by city or town staff. There's been numerous precedents up and along down 64th. I believe I counted 20-some properties that have a fence in this exact location. The difference is they are a corner lot, and mine is technically not despite the orientation of it. And I'll just go to the next one. Here's the current fencing. It's a chain link fence, not very visibly appealing. Here's the overview of the site plan that kind of gives you an idea of why I'm here. I am the only private cul-de-sac on 64th that I'm aware of, and you can see that the orientation of my property is to that of a corner property. Where I'm putting the fence is exactly where the current fence is. I'm not trying to move it anywhere. It's 10 feet setback from the sidewalk, 20 feet in front of the easement there. The site triangle is not impeded. In this slide here, you can see that you actually pull in front of the side, in front of the fence where you would pull out. In item A there, you can kind of see where the fence would be as a good example. Here's the proposed fence replacement. Again, this is pretty standard six-foot cedar fence. I think it'll be a nice look. And again, there's numerous fence up and down 64th. Here is one block away from my property. You can see that there is a six-foot privacy fence right on 64th. These are three properties as an example. One is back-to-back, so it's actually 150 feet of continuous six-foot fence with the exact same setback that I'm proposing. And again, the difference is that they are technically corner lots, and mine is not because of the private cul-de-sac. I think my property will impact the visibility from the road for a number of reasons. One, there's a small gradient downclines, so my fence will be about a foot shorter than the other six-foot fences. And again, it's the same setback. And also, I'm not on a corner lot, so there's no traffic actually turning into my property except for the private residents who live there. So, people won't actually be looking at the fence as they would be as much as a corner property. That pretty much concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. I'll now open it up to public comment on this portion of the hearing. Is anyone here wishing to speak on this particular matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and open it up for council questions or action. Mr. Pfeiffer?
So, just so I make sure I understand, I had to pull it up on Google Maps. This is technically the side of your house.
It's questioned how the front or side has been defined. The city... Staff has defined it as the front of the house because it's on 64th, but, I mean, it looks like the side of my...
Easy question. Where's the front door?
The front door is not on the side of the road, but that's not the way the town staff defined it.
And the front door faces west?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a looking down there. You can see 64th on the top.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. I have a question, I guess, for our team. I need some clarity on the discrepancy between a corner lot and a not-corner lot in our policy here on fencing.
So, this is an interesting, unique situation where because that is a private drive that serves, I think, three properties in this area, because it's private, it is not a corner lot. That is just a street frontage lot. Would be the same for the house on the opposite side of this private drive as well. It's just one of those little quirks of the land development code where, you know, we tried to capture everything we could conceivably think of, but this is just one unique situation where the code just does not address it.
So, and I read the report, but the staff is recommending, as I understand, to decline this request. And one of the reasons was because of preserving the aesthetics of what we see on 64th, but I clearly see that there is a long line of fencing already existing on 64th, so I'm a little confused.
So, that is true, but if you look at those other instances, the fences stop parallel with... If we were to consider the cul-de-sac, the front of the house and the 64th, the side of the house or the side setback, all of those fences stop parallel to the front of the house. This applicant is also requesting that to extend beyond the front plane of the house if we were to consider the cul-de-sac side the front. So, in either instance, because of the request, it would still require a major modification.
Right. I understand that part. I guess I'm just not clearly getting the difference. You know, when I see these pictures that the applicant has shown of, again, as a, you know, just a citizen driving down the street, I see a long line of fencing already existing. And so, I would not see this being contrary to what already exists.
That... You can certainly make that interpretation, and that's why, you know, we... Staff took the position, the conservative position of the code, but that's why we also allowed the major modification process to address these types of situations.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or action? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion if there are no more questions.
I don't see any more.
Okay. Move that the major modification from the land development code to increase the maximum height allowed for a solid fence in the front setback to six feet when the land development code Division 4-7-2 restricts the height of solid fences in the front yard to three feet, generally located at 5618 West 64th Avenue. Arvada, Colorado be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the planning commission, and I want to make... And I, I want to make a comment, just two comments. One, I'm compelled by the applicant's pictures here showing the very similar to near, near identical situation in other places on Sixty-fourth Avenue. Two, I think the applicant's desire to place the fence in the same location where the existing fence is and the topography change there, the grade change there minimizes the effect that this six-foot fence could, could have. And so for tho, and, and, and one other comment, and that's, we used to hear these kinds of cases at the Board of Adjustment frequently all the time. This was one of the more common things that we addressed, and now we're addressing them through this major modification process. And I think, my hope is that for the applicant, this hasn't been too tough of a process to get to this point, to a decision point, nor too costly. You know, back in the days when this was through the Board of Adjustment, it was a reasonable process for citizens to access, and my hope is that it still is. So for those reasons, I will be voting yes on this motion.
Thank you. Mr. Mormon, oh, thank you. All votes have been cast and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you for being here tonight and presenting that to us and good luck with your fence. All right, next, I'll open a public hearing for CP two-zero-two-three dash zero-zero-zero-five. I think that's too many zeros, zero-zero-zero-five. A resolution by the planning commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado to amend the twenty-fourteen Arvada Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation pertaining to Commercial Neighborhood CN Zoning District. Oh, there you are. You moved on me.
Figured I'm the applicant in the sense on this one. You may, we may want to consider both of the, the cases there at the same time. They both relate to the CN district.
Okay, and so thank you for that. And also open the public hearing for CB twenty-three dash zero-one-eight and ordinance amending certain provisions within the land development code of the Arvada City Code to adding zone district commercial neighborhood ordinance number forty-eight fifty-one. Please proceed.
Great, thank you. As we previously discussed in a, in a workshop on this item a couple of months ago, this is a result of a city council strategic result in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five plan, which was to create a zone district for, or to allow for pocket neighborhoods or, or in this sense, a commercial development, small-scale commercial development located within or near residential areas. So the CN district is the result of that strategic result. The purpose would be, again, to allow small-scale commercial retail restaurant services to be located either within neighborhoods or adjacent to neighborhoods on collector or arterial streets. The, the standards for this district would very closely relate to our residential districts in terms of size, lot sizes, setbacks, building heights. A couple of things that were changed as a result of our workshop where there was a discussion about the minimum landscape requirements. We originally had a twenty percent requirement. There was some feeling that maybe that was a little onerous to allow for a little more flexibility on the site. We've reduced that to fifteen percent. And then in the uses, they would all be conditional uses. As you see there, a variety of uses, but it was also suggested that bed and breakfast be a use that could be allowed in this district, and so we've included that in the district as well. There are limitations on the uses, basically revolving around the hours of operation, given that this would be in a neighborhood context, and so those are listed here. Parking would have to be provided off of a collector or an arterial street so that a local street in the neighborhood would not be impacted by potential on-street parking, even though parking would be a requirement of this district. The standard parking requirements would apply. That would be the off-street parking requirements. This would, given the small scale, we don't think that's onerous, but there would be the opportunity for a user to request a parking reduction through a parking study as well. So there, we've allowed some flexibility in terms of parking. There would be some requirements for buffering against adjacent residential homes. This is just one of the options that would be allowed, which would be a six-foot fence if there was parking adjacent to a residential lot. Sinage would be fairly small scale, similar to what we allow in the old-town districts, so very small monuments or wall signs would be allowed. These are just some examples of what that could look like. Most of these examples are within our community today. You've got CB's Fish and Chip, CB Fish and Chips, and you've got the State Farm on Ralston Road. Those are conversions of existing homes into commercial uses. Here are some older, just kind of neighborhood-scale buildings that happen to be in Denver, but you could see some new construction that could look like this as part of the district. And then some maybe slightly larger-scale projects that could be two stories in height. The intent here is just to create the district. It is not to actually rezone or remap any properties in the city. Any rezoning request would have to come from a private entity looking to rezone, and so therefore the council, planning commission would see the rezoning request as well as a conditional use for the proposed use. And over time, if the use changed in that building, passed an original approval, any new condition, any new use would come to the council for conditional use review so that the council could make sure it fits in with the neighborhood character and also give neighbors an opportunity at a public hearing to voice their opinions. As I mentioned, we've had a workshop with, with council. We also had one with planning commission. We've done the proper notice for this hearing with publication in the Arvada Press. There's also been information on our website. The planning commission at their May meeting did recommend approval of the zone district, seven to zero. And the last piece is just the comprehensive plan amendment, which was the first item. The planning commission did recommend approve, or did approve that amendment, and we're looking for council ratification. That simply state, changes the suburban residential land use category on the map and indicates that the CN district would be an allowed use in that district or in that land use category. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up now for public comment. Please, if you'll come to the microphone, please.
My question is for you, what would be the reason?
Ma'am, if you'll address council, please, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm new at this.
That's okay.
I just, my question would be, why, why rezone? Is it just about money? Is it finances? I mean, what would be the reason to put these businesses here when, in neighborhoods? I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood, I guess, is what I'm saying. And, and what kind of businesses would it, could it be? If it's bars, stuff like that, I don't think most people would want it in their neighborhood, but what would be the reason? Is it financial? Is it, is it usually, is that the bottom line? Is finances? That's it.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm very nervous, I wasn't.
You're okay. No, you did a great job. And, and like other public comment, we don't necessarily respond, but we'll ask the applicant to come back up and address that question, please.
So this is just simply an option that we, as a city, can consider and the council can consider. We don't have any intention of, again, rezoning any of these areas. This would be potentially a private entity that would come in, purchase a lot, and then request this particular use. And again, the idea would be, because we're not advocating for it in terms of a rezoning, that decision would be made at this level after public hearings, after neighborhood meetings, and it would be determined whether there is neighborhood buy-in at that point. In terms of the uses, let's see, can we go back to the slides? I probably went through that pretty quickly, so I apologize. So bars and taverns would be allowed as well as like restaurants or makerspaces, office, and some small retail, but we did hopefully put some guardrails on those uses by limiting the hours of operation, which would generally be no later than ten or eleven o'clock in the evening on those uses.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other comments or questions, so I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for council questions or action. Ms. Simpson.
I've reserved the motion.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fret.
Thank you. For one of the purposes, I know there was a discussion, kind of to her question as well, is that by having these neighborhood areas where you can have businesses, it would reduce travel and traffic because people would be able to walk or bike. Is that still a variable in which we're considering?
Certainly, yeah. And, and the, yeah, the intent was really to have a walkable commercial area, small walkable commercial areas.
Awesome, thanks. When you talked about parking requirements, one of the things I'm curious about is have we explored shared parking? For example, if a church has utilized certain hours, could that business share parking and that could be a variable to consider, or do we not have that?
We do, and yes, it could be. We do have that allowance in the code today, so they just have to provide lease agreements. It needs to be, I think, within five hundred feet of the property, I think is what our code says, but it's certainly something that's allowed today.
Awesome. And then just the last question is, if they're going to rezone in the future, how are we messaging it to people to know that the, this is an area in which you could rezone?
Well, any particular rezone request, would there be a requirement for a neighborhood meeting up front before any application is submitted? There'd be posting of signs on the property, mailing of notices. So the typical rezoning process would be in place.
I think I meant before that, so if I was someone that owned the place and said, "I want to rezone," how would I know? How would that be messaged?
Um, you know, we would certainly have information on our website for this particular district, and obviously it would be in the, the land development code, but we, you know, find that in these situations, if somebody's really interested in doing it, they will, they will go forward and, and find the, the right information. And we are always helpful, always happy to be helpful in that instance.
Thanks.
Mr. Mormon.
Thank you. I know, I think you've said this a couple of times tonight, but I just think it's important repeating that our action today is, is not to rezone anything, but this is more of a, another tool in the toolbox. And so if, if a community, if a property owner wants to consider a different business type than what is existing in the residential area, then they would have to apply for that request, and it would have to go through a public process. There would have to be a public hearing. As you said, the neighbors would need, the neighborhood would need to be informed and be part of that process to determine then whether that is approved or not, correct?
That is correct, yeah. The only thing, the only action proposed here tonight is just to allow, to create this district in the land development code, but to go no further than that at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simpson, if you'd like to make the motion.
Thank you. I move that CP two-zero-two-three dash zero-zero-five, a resolution by the planning commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the twenty-fourteen Arvada Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation pertaining to Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District be ratified. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages two of the staff report. And I'll make a quick comment on this. So I understand any particular neighborhood concerns. How this is truly envisioned is creating neighborhood coffee shops, maybe small little restaurants, small little businesses such as a real estate, or as we noted Airbnb, thank you for getting that in there, team, daycares as well. So please, we don't want people fearing the worst. This is not going to be biker bars in the middle of residential neighborhoods. This is more community placemaking, creating little neighborhood shops and gathering spaces that we can walk to as opposed to having to get in our cars and drive to. This is something we get a lot of demand for as city councilors, and so I'm very excited to see this moving forward. And so for those reasons, I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment as well. I think, you know, when we look across our landscape here, we've got a couple of examples of this in places. The presentation showed Ralston Road, which is existing conversions of residential to some more commercial uses, I, I believe in a wholly appropriate fashion because those small offices along Ralston Road work fantastic as offices, but would be terrible places to live because you have Ralston Road in your front door. And so that, that's an appropriate spot and appropriate use. I think you can also look to places like Five Parks where they've got some commercial development in the middle of the residential development. Now, that was done differently through a PUD, and there may be others of those where a large parcel is developed all at once with kind of this concept in mind of, you know, kind of a mixture between residential and commercial in one spot. But we also have to be able to address the already-built environment, the places where, where things already are. And my sense is that this would be undertaken very carefully by any council, would be very, very careful about, about this. But I think it's a good thing for us to have and allows, as the city changes over the years, in places that are appropriate, allows a better outcome than, than not allowing it. So for that reason, I will be voting yes as well.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Well, I'll echo, I mean, they both said what I was thinking as well. I, I think what is nice about this is, you know, we were reflecting, at least the conversation I remember was reflecting on like Denver having some of these one or two or three little shops on, on the ends of these communities that allowed folks to go to an ice cream store or anything else, the walkable community, creating sense of place, placemaking. Those are all the words that I'm interested in and, and, and the built environment like Mr. Marriott brought up. I think this is a great option. Of course, it'd be under scrutiny through council when it gets to that point, but I think this is a great thing for our community to have this option, so I'm going to support it as well.
Great. All votes are cast and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. If you'll make the second motion.
All right. I move that CB twenty-three dash zero-one-eight, an ordinance amending certain provisions within the land development code of the Arvada City Code to add the zoning district commercial neighborhood be approved on final reading number four-eight-five-one and ordered published by title only.
Mr. Pfeiffer, thank you. All votes are cast and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you, everybody. Good work tonight. Next on the agenda is our second public comment time. Does anybody, any member of the public wish to speak during this public comment session? Yes, sir, please come on up. And for this session of public comment, we actually have five minutes, so if you'd like to speak for five minutes, that's great, or you can speak for less.
I don't think I'll need five minutes. Good evening, council members. My name is Pete Simon. My wife and I have lived in Arvada for twenty-five years in the sixty-nine-hundred block of Quay Court. I want to thank the city council for passage last month of your fireworks ordinance. It hopefully will bring, at least down the road, welcomed relief for homeowners, their children, and their pets who live in neighborhoods across the city. The ordinance is timely. Last week's July Fourth celebration seemed particularly loud. That's why I'm here. Like most people, we are tolerant and enjoy fireworks displays that are sanctioned by the city with an emphasis on public safety. In this setting, we can enjoy the colors on display, the crackle that fireworks brings, surprises from the bursts of color adds to the attraction. But the sudden surprise of illicit fireworks activity is another matter altogether. Last week's unwelcome surprise activity was particularly loud for me. In my neighborhood, more than a dozen cherry bombs or M-80-like devices were detonated. One of them exploded near our house and shook our windows. It's too close for comfort. Such activity brings back memories of my service in the U.S. Navy aboard a destroyer more than fifty years ago during a bombing run that our ship made on the island of Calibra in Puerto Rico, out northeast of Puerto Rico. It taught me all I needed to know about the term hangfire. Hangfire in a gun turret. It brings the sudden surprise of an explosion. It brings the sudden surprise of an explosion, releasing the projectile, and it's very unnerving, believe me. So, in closing, my heart goes out to all the servicemen who encountered much worse than that, and that's why I thank you again for your passage of this ordinance, and I hope in the future there is, or there's enough human resource, or are enough human resources to enforce this across the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak during this public comment section? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment session and open it up for individual council member reports. Mr. Pfeiffer.
I don't have a report, I have more of a question. I was at a community meeting a few weeks ago, and there was a few individuals, there was a few individuals that brought up needle disposal sites for folks that may, that might be diabetic or anything, and just a place to properly dispose them. I guess Westminster does it, a few other cities just have it as, as a spot. I didn't know if we did something like that or anything we could look into.
We do have them, we're actually talking, we talked about that at a meeting earlier this morning, so we're looking at our need to actually provide larger disposal.
Would they be here at City Hall or at city locations, or?
There are some at City Hall.
That, somebody could drop off if they are-
Oh.
-needing insulin, they need to get rid of a bag of them.
We don't collect by the bag. We have actually-
Individual.
Right.
So, so this is, this is like somebody who saves up needles in their house because they're diabetic, and they have a bag of needles, instead of throwing them in the trash, is there a place to properly dispose them?
I'll have to look into that more. We do not currently-
Yeah, I guess Westminster's doing it, and somebody else is doing it too.
Okay.
I guess a couple of cities are, so some of the residents were asking about that,
and- Okay.
I thought maybe that's something we can look into as well.
Will do.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor Portim. I just have an announcement, that I will be having my annual District One potluck this Saturday at Firefighters Park from 2:00 to 4:00. So I'd like to encourage anyone to come and, and bring some food to share, and I'll be baking a pie.
Rumor has it, he makes good pies.
The rumors are true.
All right. Seeing no others, do we have anything from our city manager, Ms. Gillis?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay. Ms. Morris, city attorney?
You know, I don't usually have comments, but I wanted to brag a little bit on my team tonight. They really did, they got a lot of stuff done, and you could see how hard they're working and how great their work is, and how dedicated they, they are to their roles as advocates in some of that work product. So I just wanted to throw that out there, but that's all I've got.
Absolutely, and you know that cleanup is not always like the things people want to do, but it's really needed, so I really appreciate it.
Exactly, exactly.
Great, great comment, and with that, we stand adjourned.